It being 6:30, I would like to call this meeting in Manchester by the Sea Select Board to order. Jeff?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Kathy here. Ann is here and John.
John is here.
This meeting is being recorded. Are there any public comments on items not on the agenda? Is there anybody online that's... Tony?
Would I see that on my... Does Greg usually log into the Zoom? All right, let me pull that up.
I can't do two things at once.
That's fine. I'm used to it.
Apparently, there is none. The chairman's report is that trash has not been picked up on Pine Road, Harper Street, Ridge Street.
It's been variable. Like on Pine Street, we had trash picked up and not recycling. Some streets had both. It looked like some had one or the other.
Mine was picked up. Well, not mine personally, but my neighbors'. My bag was too heavy. They picked up my recycling, but not my garbage.
At least some stuff is getting done, but it's...
It's haphazard of that.
Yeah, it's kind of that. But it's happened.
Is that just today's collection?
Yeah.
Yeah, most of Pine Street was still there.
The recycling.
Yeah.
Lower Pine had trash picked up.
The more or less western side of the town gets picked up on Monday, and the rest of the town gets picked up on Tuesday. I heard that the union was not blocking trucks in Gloucester.
Yeah.
You would hear more.
Yeah, so, well, as we all know, Republic Union went on strike at midnight of the 30th of June. So, on Tuesday, our trash had been picked up on Monday, and then on Tuesday, our DPW did the collection. And this week, we've been notified by Republic that they would have their secondary crew. And, you know, it should be, collection should be happening as usual, Monday and Tuesday, both trash and recycling. They are working with a backup crew who isn't used to the route. They may not have as many people. So, if there is, you know, we want to know if there's any roads not being picked up so that maybe we can get, have them, pick them up tomorrow. If not, we have to come up with some other arrangement. But we did expect there to be some hurdles with this backup crew.
You know, this is Marlene Dolan. We live up on Woodcrest Road. Hi, Ann, hi, everybody. And I just wanted you to know the same thing with Kathy is up here, which is that trash picked up, yes, recycling, no. And I know that we are on the same schedule as Crafts Court, so I think we're all on what Ann said. So, if we need to take it all in, that's perfectly fine. We're happy to do so.
Wait a day.
Thank you.
I can see it's going over to Wednesday, maybe.
It's just the raccoons don't respect bags.
They'll be accepting bags at the transfer station on Wednesday, their regular time?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Action items. Did we get a new version of the action items?
I didn't see it.
No, I didn't see it either.
You didn't? What, seven?
The action items in the packet are from May.
It was not an updated.
I'm looking at it online right now. Really? Yeah. Oh, I must have grabbed the wrong, I must have printed one and I grabbed the wrong. But the one online is fine? Yes. That is really weird. So, for today, we originally had a discussion on, an update on Newport Park parking. I think it says owner, John.
Yes.
A short-term bylaw, review or proposed bylaw. So, we got to get that on the agenda at some point. Roles and responsibilities for downtown improvement, which we do have on the agenda. MBTA 3A Task Force dissolution, we have that on the agenda. And that was it for today. So, the two things that we're missing from the agenda are the Newport parking, Newport park, parking and short-term bylaw. Short-term, yeah, short-term rental bylaw.
And given that Tony is coming up to speed, the Newport thing is a little complicated, and we need a lot of thought on the short-term.
Right. I think what would be helpful, though, is a discussion on how we want to proceed so we can maybe give Tony some guidance. When we left off with Greg, we talked about some other towns that had some interesting recent adaptations, like Province Town was one. Greg had mentioned another one, and I just don't remember which was it.
It was a much bigger town.
Cohasset?
I don't remember. Province Town was the one I had brought to his attention, but I don't remember what the other one was. Because we have a lot of short-term rentals on Airbnbs and whatever, and we're not managing them at all right now.
Supposed to be licensed if they're six days or less. The state uses 30 days as a short-term, and we think we should be closer to the 30 days. And there's a slight remnant of family compounds where great-grandfather built the place, and now we're at all second cousins and kind of keeping it going. And I think we don't want to discourage that, but we don't want all of our housing turned into short-term.
Right, right. Well, I had the pleasure of going through this process in the hot. We had a, it started with a town meeting, town meeting action to adopt the local hotels' tax and to create a short-term rental bylaw advisory committee. That lasted a little bit over a year, and then they proposed a, it was a zoning and a general bylaw at town meeting. And then, once that was approved, worked through the process of the board, the select board establishing a rules and regulations in accordance with the bylaws that were passed. You know, we went with 28 days because of February. But the building code is a big piece of it, especially now, new building code and depending on the number of bedrooms that you have and certain type of safety requirements that are required, that becomes a part of the subject. But safety was a, was a big element of it for us. You know, you have, oftentimes, it's someone who's not familiar with the property that they're renting, and God forbid there was any sort of emergency, they're not, they may not be familiar...
They're not aware of the fire team, which is...
Right, or even how to get out, or even if they're not the main person renting the property, they might not even know the address, you know? So, if they have to call for help, another thing is, you know, ensuring that the person who's, you know, really, it comes down to good management of it and making sure that the place is safe, that the manager's being responsive to any issues that are coming up. You know, neighborhood impact was a big element of that, too.
Right. Could you distribute to all of us the bylaw, the zoning and the regulations?
Yep.
We can just...
We can just take that Taylor 20s.
Yeah. Okay, nice.
Why would you invent the...
S slash Manchester.
Right. Be a good starting point. You know, these other towns have already done it. We don't have to invent the way.
Thank you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Great. For action items?
Oh, the parking, Newport Park parking.
I can report on that now, or later it's on, but why don't I just report on that right now? The DPW, as you know, moved around where these parking slots were for people who want to access a powderhouse hill. They've been moved, I don't know, about 50 yards from where they initially had thought. They have a plot plan as to how that would work, and right now, that sits with the Housing Authority. And the Housing Authority's director, executive director, recently retired or left, et cetera. They found a new person from Gloucester whom they like, or at least I spoke to one of the trustees, and he said, "Yeah, she seems like a pretty good person. I think she's only started like two or three weeks ago." So, this plan has been sitting with them for a month, and I'm not saying this is the most high priority item for her, but she's got to get to it. But that's where it stands. I think that the DPW has been waiting for them to get back now for probably about three weeks.
How many spots are there?
Two.
Me too.
Just two. But they were going to be right at the end at the entrance, and I don't know, you kind of know Newport Park's layout.
Yeah.
And they were going to be right at the entrance where you walk up the hill and there's access for trucks and cars, et cetera, needed. And now it's going to be really opposite the little circle with the rotary. There is space directly behind that.
That's close. It's a tiny area.
It's within 25, 30 yards.
It's not up against a path. It's got a...
Yeah, it's within 25, 30 yards at the entrance.
I'm going to hype up its number 20. Hold on, now we're too far away.
Depends whose, depends whose dog you're talking about.
Exactly. I was just thinking.
I'm going to exercise, but not get my exercise.
So, we go on to the regular agenda. The first item is the committee interview with James Hoffman. Yes.
That will be you.
We've read your application. I would like to hear you explain for a couple of minutes what you think you would, you would bring to the Conservation Commission. And, you know, the usual question is, do you have enough time to do this?
Yeah, sure. Happy to do that. So, I've moved to, my family moved, my wife and I moved to Manchester by the Sea just two years ago. We lived in Wellesley for 20 years and then moved out to California, Monterey Peninsula for five years, and then moved back a few years ago and lived on Sawmill Circle and then built a house on Eaglehead Road. And we're both from Wisconsin originally. And I worked at Wellington Management in Boston my whole, my whole career, but I've retired from there. I have agribusiness still on the West Coast, but I definitely have the time and the interest in serving on the commission. I was introduced to the idea by another resident who definitely felt diet-free time and the capacity and the skills to serve. And I do have a passion for conservation property. The farm that I have has about 25 acres of mixed woodlands on the Willamette River and farm, most of the farm organically, and I've done some innovative things on introducing pollinators to commercial farming to increase natural pollination for blueberries, which is one of the crops I grow, and have joined the Xerces Society, which is about pollinators. And so, it's been a passion of mine. So, when I thought about how I could help out the town, that was a big element for me. My career has been in real estate, so from the other side of the perspective, I'm pretty familiar with commercial real estate, all property types, and I've worked with a lot of developers. I'm on the investor's side, so, you know, we view, on the investor's side, you view classes half empty, and the developer is always at full, and you're always trying to meet in the middle and adjust for risk and see things happen in an economic, productive way, but protect capital and the risk. So, I do have kind of a, I think it's about process and, you know, what the rules are and making sure they're equitably applied. But in this case, in the Conservation Commission, there's the overriding principle of protecting water and protecting the resources, which I think everybody in Manchester by the Sea really respects. That's why, why we're here. That's why we were drawn to the area and kind of the round jewel of the community, the water outside our window, streams. And so, you know, I think I can, I can contribute. I met a few people on the committee and went on one of their field trips already, and seemed like a good group that I could, I could work with. So, that's kind of my story.
Jeff?
Sounds like it's very qualified, and thank you for stepping up.
And so, you've met with Steve?
Yeah.
Good. He's...
I don't know what Steve thought, but he's...
We haven't heard from him, so I guess that's a good thing.
He lets you know.
No, I just, I agree. I like the two sides of the coin. You know, you can look at these applications that come before you, those two different perspectives, the real estate side and the...
Can I just ask?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Mass, Mass Law, Mass Turn Law, you have a getup, you on that?
You know, I think it's going to be a learning curve. I mean, there's, I think anyone who's been...
I don't expect you to be an expert.
Yeah, I mean, I've had to deal with things like asbestos and everything else, and you do have to kind of look through the engineers and some of the consultants to tell you exactly what the law is and not your gut reaction to something. And then, you know, seek to read it three times, but it's never changing. But those are the kinds of things, you know, in the securities business, too, you know, you're heavily regulated. You've got to take the pains to understand what the rules are and follow the rules.
Yeah. So, Jim, your avocation and vocational background, I think, are very good fits. Time is a factor here. I know that the Conservation Commission gets thicker packets that they have to look at before every meeting, more than any other committee. A lot of drawings and background and that sort of thing, so there's a lot of reading that goes into all of that.
I paid for one of those.
You know what's supposed to work.
Yeah, it's after a whole meeting where they went through five of them, and it's, that was daunting. That's why I've been here for a year and a half.
Right, so you already... Know what's going on with all of that.
I think, I think, I saw one of the things on your agenda item about the virtual versus in-person. I think you get more attendance by people being a patch in, and some of those meetings can go pretty long. There's a lot of info that you want, that be able to have a few times to look at it and blow it up, see what you've got. I think that helps them.
Well, it's good that you not only attended the meeting, but also field trips, which are fairly common on that particular committee.
I'm going to see the town.
Went in in a hurry. Thanks for volunteering.
I can almost check on everyone's, thank you for volunteering. I think you're a great individual.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yes.
I move the board appoint James Hoffman as a member of the Conservation Commission for a term to expire on June 30th, 2028.
Further discussion? John?
Yes.
Ann says, yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Great, appreciate it, Jim.
I'm impressed that you came to the commission after having been on the other side of the desk.
Thank you. I'm not going to...
No. My man.
The next candidate is Brendan Lampier. And...
That's me.
Okay. Parks and Rec.
Partly, I've recently gotten into coaching, and so, we've been using the facilities a lot. I coached the winter basketball, travel team out of live, and some other things. I grew up here, so I was coach field playground. I was like my grandparents, like great-grandparents, all sorts of things. My mom was, you know, was the same. If my kids would have been, if COVID didn't cancel a year, my kids, me and my mom, all would have gone to the same elementary. So, it's, so I have a long history in the town. I'm very impressed with what they've done, like as, as their program has evolved since I was a kid and I was here. I'm not someone who looks to change anything. I teach, I facilitate EQ stuff for my company, like I work for a large Fortune 500 company, something I enjoy doing. I don't, I'm measured in my decisions. I, you know, I try to be very much, you know, gather the facts before you make anything. And I'm, I'm not looking to shake the world, I'm looking to support the people that are already in place. And I, I think it's a good program, and I'm just happy to do something. And I have a 10 and 12-year-old, so they're going with their girls, which, think about it, while I was a child, there was no girls program, nothing like that, right? And coaching girls' basketball is kind of an eye-opening to how like they can be what, you know what I mean? They get to go through that same thing, because I think it was only softball. You know what I mean? When I was a kid, and now I'm very, I'm happy to see it, especially because of my own interest. I have girls, so I have to be in that tradition. So, happy to answer any question.
Yeah.
Yeah, look, your background, and you certainly know what's going on here. Can we assume that you know all of the folks that are on the Parks and Rec Committee, and you're familiar with the programs? You did say you're an emotional intelligence expert. Can you help me with my tennis game?
No, only if you can calm down and realize it and gather all the information before you hit the ball back, which I know that, you know, kind of instinctually.
A lot of contingencies there.
Right, exactly.
All right, so, is this your first committee?
Yes. I have volunteered before, and I can, especially it was like, I thought I liked the process, it was okay, and then she kind of, at the meeting was really, one of the people, like, "Thank you for even coming up and asking." And it might have not been in my wheelhouse, and that might have been the thing.
Oh, no, I mean, your kids are, what'd you say, 10 and 12? That's an age, age where I say, "I got a little bit of my time back, maybe I can do something."
Yeah.
And so, that's, that's great. So, thanks for volunteering.
Well-qualified. Thank you for stepping up.
Go ahead.
I'm still baffled by an emotional intelligence charge. I've had Brandon on the basketball court, you know, so I've known him for a while. I'm not a yeller, right? No, no, because you seem to have contained your emotional... I can't speak to your intellectual intelligence. Exactly. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Jeff?
I mean, I've known Brandon forever, so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he's definitely a team player. We've worked together on all kinds of stuff, so any, any board would be lucky to have him.
Thank you for...
Okay. Thank you. Ready for motion?
Yes. I move that the board appoint Brandon Lampier as a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee for a term to expire on June 30th, 2028.
Second. John?
Yes.
Ann says, yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I think Debbie, you said that Miranda...
Yep.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Okay. The next question is the water and sewer bill abatement for Mr. Jewell at the project for... Is he...
I don't know, but let me see. I can provide that.
Sorry about that.
Ah, here you are.
Here I am. So, having not approached the select board before, from this path anyway, I'm not quite sure of the best way to start. Do you have any background on this at all at this point?
We have something in our packets from, I assume, Tony and Chuck, and we have your original letter.
Okay.
And I guess to this...
Go ahead.
Tony, why don't you explain what the, the approach that you would take?
Well, so, the, there is a, am I, is it Jewel, Mr. Jewel?
Dick is just fine.
All right, so, the residents did experience a spike in usage in their last bill compared to the same bill cycle for a five-year average, where typically, they were seeing around 1,500 cubic feet, and this past cycle, it was around 2,400 cubic feet. So, there certainly was a spike. It was an actual read, so it's an estimated amount of consumption. Mr. Jewell reached out to our DPW department to seek an abatement. Typically, you know, for the town, from the town's perspective, we want to see a resolution to whatever caused that spike in usage before we provide an abatement, so that it doesn't continue to occur. You know, many times, we have to explain to the resident that, you know, if you find a leak and fix it, that actually is a good thing for us. It shows us that the problem is fixed, and we're happy to do the abatement. I know Mr. Jewell was provided tabs, blue tabs, that'll help detect if there's a leak with a toilet, but there could be a leak somewhere else. So, I don't believe unless Mr. Jewell has different information, I don't believe a plumber has gone out to see if there's any leak in his system. I would like to see a plumber, you know, take a look at it, at the home and make sure that the issue is resolved. And we also have, we could also, now that the new meters are in stock, which wasn't the case, I think, when this officially originally came to our attention, we could put a new meter in there to get a better, you know...
Day-to-day.
Day-to-day read to understand that as well.
Okay. So, Dick?
Yeah. So, I will fill in a little bit, and that is, you know, unfortunately, we don't have anything to show why it might have happened, you know, other than sharing a good faith that we've been, you know, for the past 30 years consistently using about the same amount of water. We tried, we did the di-tab test, and nothing was there. We've looked at all of the connections in the house in terms of both inside and outside, though we do have two meters, one for the in, one for the out, and saw no evidence of any place that there would be, quote, "a leak." That would account for almost doubling from the low end, our usage during that period of time. So, I feel like I'm kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. I don't have an ability to say, "Oh, that was the reason why," you know? We just don't have that.
So, typically, you know, meters, a meter's gonna, on an actual read, a meter's not going to run unless water actually passes through it. It's possible that the meter needs to be calibrated. We would, we're coming up, I think, to the next quarter of reads, so that may confirm an issue. But as of right now, you know, there's no, there's no evidence of an issue that led to the high use that's been resolved.
I assume that the bill differentiates between the indoor use and the outdoor use?
Yes, it's actually a separate bill for the in...
Two meters.
And the out.
Oh, yeah, two-meter thing.
So, the, and the excess was on the indoor use?
Correct.
Okay.
And the only other, the other thought that came to mind, first thought that came to mind was, what were the dirty water incidences in that period of time? I couldn't remember, and I asked DPW, I mean, the water department, and they did not recall that, because I know when there's dirty water, we run to get the dirt out of the street. Like, sometimes we just run the outside, but sometimes it gets into the inside, we run the inside. But I don't remember that happening.
No, and I don't, I asked, I asked, too, I don't think that there was any other households in this area that experienced a spike in use, which would have likely indicated that we asked people to run the water.
Right.
So, would a good first step be to get the new meters installed in Mr. Jewell's property?
Yeah. I think that's something, that would be a good way to see if there's an issue.
There was, there was a suggestion on the floor, I don't recall where it came from, in terms of a plumbing, a plumber taking a look. in terms of a plumbing, a plumber taking a look at our systems, find out if indeed there is a leak, that's an expense that we would incur, and we're both retired, and anyway, I'm not quite sure what that's going to tell us, that we didn't already determine ourselves, but I'm not a plumber. I guess I'll leave it at that.
Well, I think we're not opposed to the abatement, we just want to find out, we're not going to be giving quarterly abatements.
Right.
Right. I, I understand.
Yeah. Yeah. You've obviously discussed this with the DPW. When they have folks that have problems like this that come to them from time to time, we don't see most of them, to be honest, that kind of resolve there. So how did, how did, how was it left with Chuck and Nate and Sue?
Well, I spoke directly with Sue from the beginning, right when we first shot the bill, and raised the issue with her, and she looked and said, "You're right, that is quite different from all we wanted from before." And then she brought that, and I said, "Well, you know, how do we go about an abatement?" And she said, "I'll need to talk to Chuck about that." And she got back to me and said that we would need to present this to you folks for a resolution. That they, they, she didn't say why they couldn't do anything, they, they just said that our next step was to approach the slot court, so here we are.
And that occurred before I was...
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, no, this is all... So, in the future, I would hopefully come up with a resolution before it comes to your attention. But I do think, you know, we can certainly read his existing meter, add, put in a new meter, but, you know, and I, I think it's, we all understand that the abatement process usually is, you know, tied to a resolution, so let's see if we can investigate a little bit better. These older meters, it's really hard to know without that daily consumption data...
Yeah.
What occurred.
And, and the new meters will give you basically hour by hour.
So you can pinpoint it.
So you can look for something that's still running at 2:00 in the morning.
Right. Right. So, that would be, my suggestion is, you know, let's investigate it further by either reading the current meter again or installing a new meter, and then I'll work with Chuck on, you know, processing.
I'd get a plumber in there somehow. Find out what's going on.
Something could have been left, something could have been left on, and now it's off.
Yeah, a new meter, uh...
That's going forward. A new meter just won't happen going forward.
We have no problem, as I hear, with the abatement, but let's get the new meter replaced to make sure that we're not going to be doing this again.
Right.
And then we can address, uh, you know, that last quarter, the way I feel.
Okay, so, not offer an abatement immediately, but...
If it's there, we haven't offered yet.
Change, change the meter as quickly as possible, monitor the usage, and if there is continuous use...
Then it's not the problem.
Then I think they need to get, they need to get a plumber.
So, and then additionally, what I would recommend to Mr. Jewell is to, if he hasn't yet, to pay the bill, and then the abatement will basically be a credit towards a future bill, because the longer that bill is outstanding, it grows interest. So it's better to pay it and then go through the process of the abatement, and if it's approved, it would be provided in the, in the form of a credit.
Okay, I understand. At the time, when I was speaking with Sue Taylor, I raised the issue of the bill being due shortly, and she said, "Well, don't worry about that, we will go through the process and then we'll address that." But based on what you said, we, we paid for the outside service bill, which was pennies, uh, pennies, compared to the...
The winter quarter, nothing going on.
You got it. Well, I think we paid for a little over $7 of water, I don't know. The tail of the winter quarter.
No.
Alright, so I'll follow up with Mr. Jewell and Chuck.
Okay.
Okay. And I didn't see, I heard the voice, but I didn't see who was talking, and who was doing...
Tony.
Oh, Tony, I have not met you, only seen you and heard you.
Yeah, well, I'm happy to contact with, I'll get your contact information from the DPW, okay?
Okay. Is, all of that is in the copy of my original letter, if you're ready?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
I will, I will just wait for the next communication to be, and then we'll, we'll take our steps.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
The next item is a very small one. Chuck has sent a letter to the state recommending a potential, potential law that will, I think, break up the drought measurement from all of Essex County to individual water management groups. And I think that's a good thing, and we should, the Select Board should also send a letter. That's neat. I move that the Select Board sign a letter supporting House Bill 1018.
Second.
Discussion? John?
Yes.
Yeah, it says, "Yes."
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Do you happen to have a copy of that letter?
Yes.
Who will sign that? Roles and responsibilities for the Downtown Improvement Planning Committee on Downtown Revitalization.
Yes, I asked that this agenda item be put on, it's actually currently the Downtown Improvement Projects Committee, but after we have our discussion on roles and responsibility, we have a proposed rebranding of the committee itself. So basically, you know, with all of the discussion on the downtown revitalization, we just wanted to make sure everybody understands what the planning board responsibility is, what the select board responsibility is, and what the Downtown Improvement Projects Committee is responsible for. They were originally chartered as more of a beautification committee for the downtown, but in recent months, probably six months to a year or so, they've really pivoted and tried to work with businesses to help our downtown be healthy for the business community. So I would like, with your permission, Mound Chair, like Steve Carhart, to kind of familiarize the board with what they're doing and what they would like to continue to do, which might be slightly different than their current charter.
Yes, thanks very much. Yeah, this, we started, of course, with the project, and we have continued to move forward the project. We've been working with DPW to provide a very detailed plan, which we briefed to the board about a year and a half ago, if I recall correctly. We have, at the request of successive chairs, become involved with a number of other things. For instance, we were very much involved with the Complete Streets projects, trying to public outreach, feedback, minor detail refinements. We have been involved in working on increasing parking enforcement to help businesses have turnover in front of their, their facilities. We've worked on getting public restrooms. We've worked on improving signage and wayfinding. We're trying to find, to find a sweet spot between being totally collegial and also being insistent enough that, that the elected leaders and the municipal employees understand these kinds of things are important. More recently, we have been invited to have members on the Resilience Task Force and on the, and on the MBTA Zoning Task Force, where we had someone who was reflective of our concerns on each of those, and also in, in the reporting process, we were able to give feedback and, and have some consistent input. We have also always had the town planner and the DPW staff attending our meetings, and particularly most recently Kathy has been, let's go back about a year, a year and a half to the, the establishment new liaison process with the Select Board, which has been wonderful. I'm afraid I drove Becky Chase crazy on some of the parking stuff a long time ago, much better. Most recently, we've noted all of the, of the town issues around vitality of downtown, and again, staying in touch with this board through Kathy primarily, and also in touch with the planning board through our joint colleague here, Gordon Brewster, and I also met briefly with Sarah Creighton. We identified a role that we could adopt would be to market downtown Manchester as a, as a place for small business, and this would be, I have two steps, this is what we're doing in cooperation with the Chamber and our good friend Jim Brown, who is a former member of the committee and is the president of the Chamber this year. What we are doing is we're having a marketing program for commercial realtors, which makes the case that Manchester is an attractive business opportunity for small businesses. And so that, put that out to realtors that deal in commercial space here in town, and also in parallel to that, we're going to have a curated incubation program to identify small businesses that we might attract or entice to town. And those would, would fall under, we have some brainstorming, just to see what those might be, and we think it's very important that they be four-season businesses, so whatever the visitors are in the summer, that's just the cherry on the top. Got to be four-season businesses, they've got to be able to make it with local clientele only, we've got to have no direct competition for whatever they're doing in town, and they need to be conscious of the fact that there is a, that the folks in town are most, are almost entirely families and nesters, there are almost no singles between 20 and 40, so they've got, so they've got to see that that's where their, their sweet spot is. We have identified six or eight possible businesses like that, perhaps an Asian takeout, perhaps youth, children's consignment shop, perhaps a computer repair and basic supply shop, variety of things like that, and we're working to move forward with that. This has been, as, as I mentioned earlier, we've been in touch with Kathy to be sure we're not getting in the way of, of anything that we shouldn't be doing, and through talking to Gordon and Sarah, and also Kathy McKay, who's come for, as a consultant on their project, was very clear that the lane we're in is that there's empty space out there in town, we're working on filling it, and, but we are not involved in the longer-term planning process for what the broader strategic, uh, generative talent might be, yeah. So that's, so, but so our immediate concern is just to be sure that space is filled, if we can do anything to help that. And there's, there's a concept called the Business Improvement District, which is a legal thing in the state, which involves putting taxes on local businesses to support marketing and things like that. What we are doing is a volunteer Business Improvement District. It's all, conceptually, that's what we're doing, but we're not talking about any taxes or anything like that, we're doing it on a volunteer basis, and see what we can do and vote in our doing it. So that's, that's my short report. I'm joined here by a large chunk of our merry band, Gergen Taka, Gordon Brewster, Gar Morse, Marlene Dolan is on the screen, I think that's it. So, we've got a lot of enthusiasm, and we're, we're very pleased for, for the opportunities to work on these issues, and we welcome your guidance and feedback and conversation on this.
Steve, before, before we move on...
Yeah.
Is it important for us to make clear that by, from the original design of our committee, it was the fact that we are not a decision-making body? We are a advisory body in a pair of hands for this board?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
So if I, if I, based on my attendance at the meetings over the past year and a half, but I, I feel that they were focused very much, like I said, on the beautification of the downtown, making it a welcoming environment. They were able to implement some projects, you know, on Summer Street, but a lot of the beautification effort has been put on hold because of the Culver project. Okay, so it's not, I, I think they're still an important committee to, to help with, to continue to help with the beautification of the downtown, et cetera.
Co-verted lamps, yeah.
Yes, but that is post-Culver project, correct? A lot of that has been postponed. So they, they still have some parts of their downtown improvement committee strategy that we had all viewed and said we agreed with, and the budget submissions for that might appear in the next round for the fiscal budget, right? For the fiscal, next fiscal year.
Yeah, there are different, I mean, there are different pieces of it.
Right.
And we identified the Elm Street to School Street segment as the highest value and least upfront cost to start with, and this has been, working with DPW, Kathy's been in all these discussions, and DPW has advised us that, that if they can make it adjacent to a project they're already doing, then they can get bids and planning and things like that done for less than the cost of doing the project all at heart.
Right, so, so for example, if the Culver project is going to rip up the downtown, right? When we put it back together, let's follow the plan that we all agreed to, right? That, that's kind of the modus operandi here. So in the meantime, while their beautification projects are a little bit on hold, they have been, you know, Steve has been attending the Chamber meetings and listening to the business community, and he brought back to this committee, you know, thoughts, and everybody said, "Well, what can we do to help them, and what can we do to help the downtown?" So I see their committee as kind of being twofold right now. It's, it's still very much important that they be involved in the beautification, but that's kind of on hold a little bit, so they've expanded their purview into helping the business community. That question here is, are we all okay with that, what they're doing, or do we want to put any boundaries around that? And I think the, the only other thing I mentioned, Steve, is that you and I attended the, oh, what was that event in Gloucester? The economic...
Right, right, that was a lot of the...
There was an economic meeting in Gloucester with some of the state representatives there, and they made us aware of programs that we could tap to get funding for things that we were not aware of, and, and to help the business community. So I think it makes sense for some entity in town to be focused on that, perhaps getting some of the funding that's available. Cities, I guess, have a district manager to manage their downtowns, what we've heard, but we don't have anything like that, so in the absence of that, I, I don't have an issue with their, and its scope, but I thought it was important to discuss.
Is there a charter? The charter...
Should be on the website.
I think, I think it predates my involvement, I think goes back to like, 2007.
One of the things I'm going to suggest... Is, is, is that you find that charter and offer us an expanded version that covers, so that we have, so that we're tracking what's going on.
This seems to be an awful lot, like, disjointed things going on, right? You know, a year and a half ago, we saw, we interviewed great renderings of the, you know, the perception of the downtown as in the play, right? And I understand that we're waiting on the Culver, but does that impact work on Summer Street and Down Beach Street, where the improved crosswalks were going and the fencing? And, I mean, it's a chicken and egg kind of thing. Do you want to, you want to entice businesses, okay, by beautification, and, okay? So I, I just think that...
So I think that...
There's too many, I think...
There are a lot of moving parts.
A lot of moving parts, and I'd like to think I can wrap my head a lot of, a lot of moving parts, but there's just, I'm hearing a lot of moving parts, but I'm not seeing any action going on.
So that's the, that's the issue, in that, I think, Tony, you want to, you'll want to get engaged here to understand the scope, because one of the, one of their projects that did reach down into Beach Street, okay? Well, DPW said, "Hey, we're going to be digging up that street for water and sewer pipes."
Does this happen, or...
Yeah, near tap. So, the approach that the committee has taken is to follow the DPW, rather than try to drive the DPW to action.
Which is fine, you know, I know that we talked about, was it White House, whatever, like, like Hill or something?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Defencing and beautification, yeah, sure.
If I may, there's also a funding issue, and I have been following along with Senator Tarr's office to try to get, there was a thing called Mass Leads that came through, trying to get a grant for that, and the, the first tranche of, of the... And the, the first tranche of, of the, uh, project itself is in the 27th half of the budget as a grant. Uh, as I'm sure the board is aware, the status of state budget is kind of up in the air. Uh, Greg Fetterschmidt mentioned to me that, that he had been in touch with Senator Tarr's office. And there was a small earmark in the last budget for that. Whether, where that stands, I don't know. And I guess Tony would have to follow up on that. But, uh, that is not, I've had trouble getting that together. There's also the issue, it seems obvious to me that the CPA would cover the, the, um, uh, restoration of historically correct streetlights as part of this. I talked to CPA, they were reluctant because that was not actually restoring a historic streetlight. It was putting in a replica. I don't know whether that's the final word on that. Uh, but I've been going around with that. I also, it seems to me that some of the, of the, of the town's ongoing budget should go to the most visible, most highly trafficked, most commercially sensitive part of our infrastructure. No disparagement to other streets or, or, or sidewalks or neighborhoods. But it seems to me that, that, that needs to stand forward. And it's kind of our lane to stand forward and say, look, this is what we think we ought to, we ought to be doing. Um, so with that said, I know Gordon Brewster had a couple of comments. Gordon sounds like a planning board, you know?
I can't, I can't speak for the planning board, but I can speak on relationship to what we just talked about. Our planning board being where we actually planned our next, you know, little breathing room right now. So we've actually planned our next fiscal year of what we're going to be talking about. And also talking about working with the downtown improvement. And I, I'd like to say that we have been working, or Steve has been working, and the whole downtown improvement is working very cooperatively with the planning board. In fact, Sarah and I and Steve had a little informal meeting down by the oceanfront and just, just chatted about this stuff, about what we may do, what they may do and everything. And personally, I find it, I find it quite gratifying that there's another, another entity in town that's thinking about a component of what we're doing. And so that's, that's a big deal. But I would like to say just briefly that the agenda for the planning board that's coming here encompasses all the things that Steve just mentioned. The aesthetics of what the, the infrastructure, the idea of the discussion that we've been talking about in downtown improvement is parking, signage, as Marlene has done such a great job on. So it's, it's all part and parcel to the larger whole. And we certainly understand it and we are, because I'm on both committees, I sit on both committees here, I understand what's going on, Steve. On the relationship to the planning board. So finally, I think we have a very good synergy going on as to what could be done for the best of the town.
I, I like Ann's suggestion, the next step might be just to have you propose a charter, perhaps discuss it with, you know, Gordon and the planning board first, right? Make sure you guys are clear on what that should be. And include in that the rebranding of your committee, how you want to rebrand the committee, and then bring that to us.
And I, I would, I would probably expand that a little bit. I was just looking at all the membership. Everybody's term here expires in 2027? Or was that a default because nobody gave them any times or what?
That's a default, that's a default because I, I, I think that we were told everything was going, as I would call it, uh, everything was going to be a one-year term. And we ended up chose to...
That seems strange to me. It does say three-year term on top on, in our...
You changed that, you changed it out of meeting.
Changed what, one year to three year?
Yeah.
But everybody's got the same term?
Who can stagger it the following year? That when 27 comes up, then I'm staggered. You guys just said three years.
Well, I can probably put that down there. I think we ought to probably get that arranged.
We can get arranged.
And more to the point, perhaps, there's a lot of interaction here with the planning board. I, you've already got a member of the planning board on your board, on your committee. I would make that kind of a, you've got to have somebody from the planning board on your group because it seems to me, that's a strong interface. And if you've got another committee or board that you think you should probably have a member to because what you're doing, you always got to have answers to, um, that would be a good idea. And obviously, the DPW, which you said you're following around, or they're following you around, one or the other, um, they're ex officio, but...
Which, to that point, what I'd like to see is some bullet points exactly, and some kind of then, once you see the bullet points, phasing, like, plan of phasing, okay? What section of town we're going to, you're looking at first as it follows. And that's something you'll, you'll cut to us through the DPW. But, you know, with the quadrants and this is, uh, you know, A, B, C, and D. Ultimately, it's going to, you know, the, the ultimate goal is to get here. But I, I'd like to see, I'd have benchmarks and goals as to where we want to get, to where we want to get.
All the committees should have that, absolutely. So I think to Ann's point, first step might be codifying the new charter, um, the enhanced charter. And then, just like the planning board did, they've outlined, you know, their sequence of events, what they're going to be working on and, and you have a clear scope, though. You know what's, what constitutes the downtowns. That was what, from Tappan Street to, or Elm Street, I forget.
Yeah, I mean, what, what we're doing is kind of growing like topsies. We've tried, done our best to try to meet the needs as they evolve and stay in touch with everybody else that's concerned. So we're not out in left field someplace doing something that is not connected. And, and I can't say enough about having Kathy as, as official liaison. So when we meet, Kathy is there and Chuck Renade is there, Mark Resnick is there, Gordon is there, along with members and of other members of the committee and various members of public, including folks in the chamber, usually the, the Historical Museum and interested members of the public. So that's, you know, we're trying to be as, as connected as we possibly can be.
From a, also, I mean, as we expand what is downtown. Uh, the landlord, I mean, is, is quite bullish on the fact he thinks a year from now he'll have all his retail full. Yeah, because then I think he'll help drive a lot of businesses on this way, too. And that's something that, right now, you can shoot a cannon off down Central Street and hit anything.
Yeah.
So I think that, uh, so I think that...
President Street's pretty nasty, so I don't, I don't agree with that.
I live there. So I think that as we look, you know, a lot of the work might be done for us, okay?
Oh, I'm, I'm a big believer in what the private sector can do. And I was explaining to Kathy earlier that, from my perspective at least, I know there's some alarmism about the decline of, of downtown. I think the alarmism is overdone because I see things moving in, like a new bank down at the Horace Point and the new wine shop and the Cafe Nero and the two new storefronts across the street.
And I know that the landlord would much prefer to have, which is great, by the way, much prefer to have retail as opposed to office spaces.
Yes, yes.
Low insurance can move out because ultimately their goal is to put retail there.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I know that, I'm fairly certain that when the rent, when the lease is over at William Ravis, retail will be going in.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, we're trying to, uh, be, we're, we're, we're not alarmist, but I don't want to take anything for granted. I think there are enough signs of the general economic situation maybe getting more difficult.
That's different, I mean, it's, it's evolving, retail is evolving. And whether or not, where it's going, if you, if you could have that answer, you could make a lot of money.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, the depth of retail happened, of downtown retail started in the 60s with shopping malls.
Yeah.
And mass exitists moved downtown. So that's what we're battling now. And now we're battling Amazon and the internet.
I think, I think it's a blessing that there are investors that are willing to put money into town. That would be more worrisome if that were not the case. But from, from my perspective, we can't take anything for granted. We need to be proactive in nourishing businesses that can make it here.
It, it, it seems to me you've outlined two quite different programs that you're doing. Um, one of them being the contacting the, um, commercial real estate people and, and generally marketing downtown. And the other is your, your effort at, at beautification, frankly. Um, and that, the beautification part is where we want to know, we're going to do this piece, we're going to do that piece, and...
I think some of the infrastructure that's, to me, I think if you build it, they will come.
I, I throw out there, keep on saying beautification. I think it's really beautification and infrastructure, as you're saying. So it's, our, our original plan, concept was to make streets better for people walking. And hopefully, if people, more people are walking, then more people would want to have businesses here because people are walking around that. So, but it's also beautiful, but it's kind of making the streets more manageable for pedestrians, cyclists, all those types of things as well.
Yeah.
To make it more vibrant.
If I, yeah, and when we're talking about going to high-quality, consistent concrete sidewalks downtown, uh, we're getting rid of the lumpy, batuminous, uneven stuff that is out there. And, and the maintenance of the high-quality concrete sidewalks, such as down near the, the beach and, and Summer Street intersection. And that, the original thing, those were done in like 2008. Look, they're, they're still there and nothing, you know, they're, they're in perfect shape. And with the high visibility, high-traffic part of downtown, it's investing in a quality and sustainable and less maintenance requiring, uh, uh, basis. Whereas in, in the more distant neighborhoods where that are used, where the traffic is less and they're not, they're not so central to the, the visibility of the community, you know, less expensive methods are, are appropriate. We're going to reduce maintenance by doing this as well. So it's, it's beautification, but it's more than beautification, I guess, as well.
From Steve and, and team, I, I, Marlene here, Dolan, 19 Woodcrest Road. I also wonder, um, mention, and again, we're having to be boxed into a smaller box if need be or rolled into another committee if we're getting in the way. But the thing we learned from working with our downtown businesses on the signage project was people really don't know where the beach is. They don't know where to get a restroom. They don't know, they don't know where to go. And thus, the signage project came up. And it was, uh, thanks to Kathy and our ideation that we got some relief for downtown businesses in the plaza on their water bill to allow people to use their restrooms. And so that whole idea is about how do we make it more friendly and more welcoming to our tourists, um, who come in and spend money here?
Just to move half the population out.
Yeah. Half the population may move out.
So I think, I think there's a lot of, of, you know, like we, when we had the planning board effort around, the ideation around downtown could be, there are a lot of moving parts. And, um, you know, some of it's in the purview of the planning board, some of it's on the select board. And this committee could be the linchpin that kind of ties things together. Because actually, you forgot to mention, the Chamber of Commerce also attends your meetings now.
Yes.
They found it value-added, so they self-invited themselves. And, and we said, fine, because you, you want to hear not just from the residents, but the businesses, there's got to be a balance.
In a sense, you're a local Chamber of Commerce.
Well, we are. And I would say, I would, I would like to say, my experience has been that the folks in town now by and large are very, very, very busy keeping the day-to-day business of the town going. And the folks that, that run our businesses and merchants are very, very busy just keeping their business going. And I'd like to imagine that we're kind of the grease and the glue that keeps Town Hall and Main Street together and moving roughly in the same direction. Um, so we, I mean, our business is trying to, to bridge that gap the best we can.
Seems like a good fit. I'd like to see it described in a little more detail.
Certainly.
And I think to Brian's point, um, after the conceptual, a list of, of, um, projects, both in the marketing side and in the, and in the infrastructure.
Um, can we work with somebody on the planning board to develop that?
It's the guy.
We got Gordon, we got Gordon.
If I may, Marlene, just to say, everything we just talked about here, what you've just talked about is exactly the same stuff we discussed in the planning board. And to Brian's point about scheduling, so I spent, I had a 30-year career in architectural engineering, did this building, buildings. So planning and design, construction, sequencing, that type of job is all vitally important to me. And that's something that I will take on with my personal purview, too. You, I've also, I just found out the other day that I'm on the facilities committee with the DPW for all planning of new buildings and stuff coming out here. So, so I'm going to go.
Great.
No, again, so you know how important it is to go to...
It's the only thing that's important, and again, basically, plan it out. And not that it falls according to plan, but the...
I want to know if, you know, if it doesn't fall according to plan, I want to know if we missed something. Okay, and that's, that's important. Okay, I'm good.
Fine, I just think, oh, we don't have to make any kind of motion here, do we?
No, that's going to have to come back with...
No, that's, that's fine. But I would say you got to have a planning board person on your committee. Well, he's, he's here right now, and I think...
As part of your charter.
Quite coincidental he's here, but I think it really needs part of the charter when you do that.
Oh, oh, oh.
Like I had mentioned, who should be part of your committee?
Okay.
I mean, you're all at large right now.
Yeah, got it. And we are down one committee, one member. So if anybody knows of somebody good that's going to spend some time really, that's great.
Um, and Kathy will report back to us. Yep, I will. I, I think, I hear general acclamation for what you're doing.
Yep.
And for the approach that you're taking to it, so, thank you.
Our pleasure.
Thank you, good. Thanks for coming on. I also have general maintenance, too.
Can you, uh, wash my car?
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the housing authority vacancy. And I don't know much about it.
It was basically just kind of, if I could...
Yes?
It was just basically to say, there's an opening because we haven't received anything. And the last time it was spoken at the meeting, it was barely addressed. So I just wanted to make it aware that there is an opening. And I, because it was on the agenda, somebody actually will hopefully be applying.
So somebody resigned, and that's an elected office?
Yes.
So because there's a vacancy, we have to appoint somebody to that slot until the next election?
Yes.
And then somebody has to get elected. So this person, whatever, is only there until next April?
Yeah, that would be April.
If I may.
Okay, I, I have spoken to someone who's on the authority and, a couple of weeks ago. And they've been looking around. They asked me, said, hey, you know anybody? I said, it's not offhand, but I think they are looking and...
Yeah.
So what is the specific, I think it would be helpful if, because this is a, you know, an elected position, um, it might help to advertise this one differently or separately.
Yeah.
Because we, we normally have the announcements, hey, there's a bunch of openings, come volunteer for the town. This sounds like we need to advertise it separately with some specificity as to what type of skill set, you know, looking for, um...
I'll talk to, um, the authority, um, housing authority. But I think there's one person that's going to be sending me an email tomorrow because of being on here.
Very efficient. See what Greg used to say behind your back.
So that was it.
Liaison update.
Uh, let's see, I think we covered the DPW stuff, at least that's hot because we talked about trash, we talked about new port.
On the trash item, uh, we, there's a reverse 911, uh, going out today that if your trash wasn't picked up today, to have it on the curb by 7:00 AM tomorrow to be collected. And when, and then Tuesday is going to be collected as well, so...
And that they'll go around all of those other routes that are Monday routes and...
Whatever wasn't.
Leave your trash, yeah.
Is that just trash or recycling also?
It says trash and recycling.
Okay.
So that's the information.
Just leave it out there overnight.
All right, so, yeah, that's, that's the story of that. So DPW, I think those are the key issues. And I know that they're starting paving on... So DPW, I think those are the key issues, and I know that they're starting paving on, well, tomorrow. I think for pleasant, pleasant. Historic District Commission, the 22 Union Street was approved by the Historic District Commission at its meeting last Wednesday. And so there'll be two townhouses that will be going in in the cargo lot. I know they, I asked them about a timeline, they're still wrestling with all kinds of issues there. But they have that approval from, the only commission from which they needed an approval. That's moving, moving ahead. Council on Aging, a couple of things going on there. I think we all got a copy of the resignation of Nancy Hammond, effective July 25th.
25th.
That's on your plate.
Retirement.
Yes.
Notice of retirement.
Yeah, right, retirement, that's resigned and retirement. So that will be a hole that needs to be filled. And I can tell you that the friends of the Council on Aging are interested in having some input or knowing what's going to happen with that. So that's involved, that's, have you got a timing on that at all, or?
No, I, we just received the notice over the, you know, late last week. I'd like to meet with the friends.
That's fine.
I haven't met them yet, so I'd like to meet with them and.
Really, but we could do it next week or so.
Yeah.
I can check in with you on that.
Yeah.
The only, the key sensitivity here, I suppose, is that there is a money-raising initiative associated with the senior center that will be launched in the fall, somewhere in the early to mid-September. And of course, that's a key person in that initiative. So that has to be thought about in the context of the timing of that mission. And Cape Ann Transit, we joined them, as you know, a few months or so ago, and they will start service with us on or about 1st of August. And the days that they will provide service here in Manchester will be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Their services run 9:00 to 3:00. The seniors just have to call, and that's it, and say, as long as they want to go anywhere for any reason within the service area, which reaches to Danvers and Linkfield in the south, to Rowley to the north, and to the ocean everywhere else. So that'll, that'll start on or about then, those three days. And we'll see how it complements our current band service. And that has to get publicized, but KADA has had to do that with all of the other communities in the Cape Ann area. We end back to the last one to join there, so they have some ideas about how to make that happen. And they say it takes about a year, two, a year and a half for things to get up to speed, people know what's going on. Those are the key things with the Council on Aging.
Sorry, from Downtown Improvement, and I have nothing on bicycling.
Pox and Rec, new member. I think the fourth went up very well, there was one issue that came up. And the fact that no one heard about it means it was well-handled, it was a water break Thursday night during the concert. And I think that Cheryl, I actually was with her, checked it out, Cheryl made. I thought the spirit, the cooperation between three different departments. Cheryl got a hold of Chuck, Sean, and this little speed bump on the end of Beach Street as a result of a break in the water, and the water was just gushing out of the catch basin into the parking lot. And initial thought was that the bathhouse and canteen would be without water until Monday. Yes, probably the hottest weekend, and we're fine with having water. And that was, they got together, and kudo, I mean, Water Department, Pox and Rec, DPW pretty much had it fixed, but the phone calls between Chuck, Chuck, Cheryl, and Cheryl didn't stop until it was all resolved that night. And then, to DPW's credit, I was, I went and checked out the fix on Friday morning before the parade. And not only was it, the speed bump and the temporary water was fixed up, but I saw her back home emptying the dumpster.
Ah, okay.
Because that was going to be a problem, you know, years. And so, you know, you're always here when the DPW doesn't do anything, but when they do do something, you don't hear about it. So I think that, and the fact that at 8:00 o'clock at night, Chuck was, Chief of Cheryl was saying that he, the initial thought was they'd be fixing it first thing on 4th of July. And that there would be, he'd have a detail there on the work. They were able to fix it Thursday night, and, but, no, it was impressive the way all three departments came together. And then everything else, the parade went off, we're all except for the bicyclists riding up our butts.
Better to have that go in front of us.
Yes, next year.
Next year they're going in front of us.
Do we have enough candy?
The candy was, the candy worked out very well, it was just about right, it was distributed appropriately by a four-year-old.
Okay, so 30 pounds next year.
Very well, just very well supervised, four-year-old.
Yes, that's correct. And the flags really were on the money, the biggest problem, of course, is that the golf cart was way ahead of us. And so we wound up with, I would say, what, 150 extra flags? But that's because we couldn't distribute anything after about the library. Because we didn't have any flags, and the cart was already up the hill somewhere. So we couldn't go back to reload. And, but if we had been able to, would have been just about right.
I took about 100 or so when I passed.
You took, oh, you did?
Went down, back down the hill and headed up.
So anyway, to finish up with Pox and Rec, I think, everything, and then all the summer programs up and running. And life is good, that's all I got.
I don't have anything, the planning board had two executive sessions back to back, and the harbor advisory won't meet again until September.
Did it take off the summer?
Yeah, yeah.
They're both people, guys.
Yeah.
All right, I understand the rationale, I guess, you're right. They're nowhere to be found.
Let's see, I, the school had a meeting of what has been called the number crunching, which consisted of the superintendent, I think the director of finance and facilities was online. She had an automobile accident, was considerably under the weather for. The two town administrators, the two chairman of the select boards, Board of Selectmen, and the two chairs of the finance committees. No one was injured. There was a clear difference of opinion between the two town, all of the representatives of, the representatives of each town, as to how involved the finance committee should be in defining the program at the schools. We, nothing was resolved, except that the next meeting will be a workshop with the same, well, one replacement player. It will be a workshop to understand the way the school does programming, particularly in the high school. And I think, I think when everybody starts with the same assumptions about how the schools make their decisions, we will, we will be in better shape. But there is clearly a big difference of opinion about whether excellence is important. I also met with the, went to Board of Health meeting, and, but we will be talking to them on the 10th. They're very defensive of their privacy.
I don't have anything on the 10th on that call, so, I can make it, but I, I keep hearing we're going to meet with the Board of Health. And I.
Did he send something out?
Yeah, I was set.
Like two hours ago.
Oh, two hours ago.
Three hours ago.
That was FinCon. That was FinCon.
Well, there's another one on Board of Health, right?
That Board of Health.
Yeah, you've got a Board of Health.
I don't see it much, right?
No, I saw this today, but what I'm saying is, I had not heard of this meeting prior to this note, so, thank you. So this is going to be, they normally meet Thursday mornings, but this will be an evening meeting.
This will be an evening meeting.
3:30 this afternoon.
3:30?
3:37, I'm mind.
It says 6:30.
Yeah, it's a meeting.
3:37, wow, they're going to do a 3:30, so we do a 3:37. And the FinCon just came up as far as, we haven't set the dates on the FinCon.
No.
Have you signed stuff now?
I don't, I don't have that.
It has to be for the liaison report. Thank you all for spending extra time on that. There is, we have now up to the consent agenda, which, is there anything anyone would like to remove?
I do have some questions on the canvassing license.
Okay. Without, for the consent agenda, do we have a vote to approve items A, B, and C?
I move the select board approve items A, B, and C of the consent agenda items.
Second.
Session, Brian?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says, yes, and John?
John, yes.
Okay.
My question on the canvassing license, there was some chitter-chatter on Facebook about some canvassing going on about some company, and the canvasser was making people uncomfortable. I don't recall the name of the company.
It was some mosquito strain.
So that was mosquito strain? This is not that company?
No, this is.
What are, do we know what they are doing?
Sunrun is a solar.
Solar panels.
It's all solar.
Is there, is there any regulation or bylaw related to canvassing?
Sure there be.
Well, they're, they're applying for a license.
Right, I mean, there must be something.
There must be something, otherwise would they.
I put the, I put this application together, because there was nothing, because they.
What, they called?
Yeah.
So they assumed that there's some sort of regulation?
Always came up before, I think it came up when Greg was here. That's why I ran this application by him. So we had something in writing than somebody just sending an email or.
It's not abnormal for municipalities to have that. Gives the town an opportunity to pre-vet the company, gives us contact information, gives, you know, a document to the actual solicitors to show residents that they've, you know, they're, they've been checked up by the town, they're not, yeah, exactly.
And it gives us an opportunity to send them home if they haven't.
If they're not behaving correctly, you're correct.
I'm all, I'm a fan of that.
Yeah, me too, I'm just wondering, what are we approving if we don't have, I mean, we're just making up a license concept on the fly?
What was it, just went into a book of forms and say, this looks good?
I just, I basically get it right from Rockport's.
Do we need any more meat to it, I guess, Tony, do we, is the question?
I mean, Sunrun is a very.